Good evening. Welcome to the January 26, 2015 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Reverend Simeon Timbuk from Bethesda Romanian Pedacostal Church with us this evening for the invocation. If you would please stand. Remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Reverend?
Our heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with thankfulness and gratitude for your blessings and your grace bestowed upon us. We thank you for the new year you've given to us, and we ask your grace to be upon everyone of us, to bless the city council and the decisions they need to make, give your wisdom, your discernment. Bless everyone of us, bless the city of Troy, the state of Michigan, and the United States of America with your protection, with your guidance. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. All right. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the justicium of justice for all. Thank you, Reverend. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Pittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here. All present. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. C1 is Economic Development Update with the presentation by Glenn Laypen, the Economic Development Specialist. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council members. I'd like to find you with an update on economic development activity here in the city. The city of Troy continued to see positive economic development activity in the fourth quarter of 2014, in the office, industrial, and retail sectors. According to CBRE, Troy's vacancy rate in the fourth quarter of 2014 was 20.6 percent. This compares to a fourth quarter 2013 office vacancy rate of about 23.8 percent and a fourth quarter 2012 office vacancy rate of 27 percent. The five-year office vacancy average is 25.1 percent. These rates all exclude the Kmart headquarters building, which is not being actively marketed right now for office space. The improving office market is particularly visible in the North Troy section. Many of the buildings there, which were once largely vacant, many of them were former EDS properties, they were vacant a couple of years ago, and now they're starting to fill up with major companies like Magna, Molina, Plex, Plex, Donums, Residential Home Health, and others. We're continuing to see additional redevelopment up in that area, and we expect additional space to be occupied in the coming year as well, which is very positive in that sector. In the industrial sector, industrial vacancy rate in the fourth quarter of 2014 was 4.5 percent. This compares to a fourth quarter 2013 vacancy rate of about 6.2 percent and a fourth quarter 2012 vacancy rate of about 7 percent. The five-year industrial vacancy average is 10.2 percent. The industrial market is tight. The numbers are fairly low. It's tight. We are seeing some redevelopment potentially, but some of those properties are a little bit older at this point, so sometimes if some companies are looking for a certain space size, maybe larger than 10,000 square feet, it's getting a little tight in terms of what their, what the offerings are out there. On the retail side, Troy's retail vacancy rates have been fairly steady and fairly low for a few years now. They were low at about 3.8 percent in the fourth quarter of 2014. The five-year retail vacancy average is 4.9 percent, so not a whole lot of change. However, we are seeing still strong demand on the retail front, particularly along the Big Beaver corridor. What we're going to see eventually, and probably in the coming months, additional proposals potentially for infill development along Big Beaver for retail, and also possibly we'll be looking at some redevelopment of older office development sites and to retail as Although the methodology for calculating vacancy rates varies, you know, between various, whoever does it, we're getting positive feedback from our, from our brokers that are out there, that are, have been out there on a day-to-day basis, so we're fairly comfortable that these rates are fairly consistent across the board. And in terms of recent economic activity that we're seeing, on the map above you highlight some of these areas, and what you're seeing up there is a variety of projects, and I'll just highlight just a couple of them right now. Form G Tech is a specialist on carbide header tooling. They purchased 1291 Rochester Road, that's the former Palmer Paint facility. They're expanding their operations as a 53,000-square-foot facility, formerly housed, housing Palmer Paint. There are approximately about 40 employees that are there, and they're expected to be located at the facility when they move in, probably in the spring is what they're looking at. Orbec 3D International, which is a Chinese company specializing in 3D measurement systems, sensors, and artificial intelligence, company will be locating its new North American headquarters at 950 Stevenson Highway. About 40 people are expected to be employed at that facility. Stanley Engineered Fastening will be taking over the former Forissa, Forcia site over on Meyer Drive, about 70,000 square feet they'll be leasing over there as well. They do fastening and assembly technologies for a variety of industries, including automotive. And also on Stevenson Highway, Peter Lackey. This international, it's a German company, they develop paint and coating systems. They'll be developing a production and research facility, 865 Stevenson, which they purchased. That's a former DuPont facility over there. The facility is expected to house approximately 27 employees when they move in, in the spring of 2015. So a common theme that we're seeing in these projects, many of them are foreign-based. And that's not just because of Troy's central location, which has an outstanding location for these companies, but also the quality of life factors that exist here. A lot of these companies want to see retail that's available to them, very strong retail. They like the strong schools. They also like the public safety components that are here, the strong city services that are available. All that kind of comes together, not just to support what's coming in in terms of foreign-based companies, but all companies as well that want to maintain competitiveness in today's marketplace. Troy is an outstanding location for them, and we're continuing to see new projects that are kind of in the pipeline as well that we're working on. So with that, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Glenn. Any questions from council? All good news.
It is good news.
Yep. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
There are no carryover items this evening, so next are public hearings. We have five scheduled this evening. First is E1, a public hearing for Industrial Development District and IDD for Unified Business Technologies, Inc. at 315 Indusco Court. And I see Nino Licari as the city assessor is ready to go. Good evening. I'll open, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. At this point, you've all been through this, other than Councilman Gottlieb, so a quick review. Tax abatements are basically a contract between the city and a taxpayer. The effect of that agreement allows them to pay virtually 50 percent on their taxes for new equipment or leasehold improvements that they might do to a structure in order to stay here for a certain number of years. Council policy resolution dictates the number of years based on whether you own or lease the building, the amount of investment that you have in the equipment, and the number of employees that you have. The way the process works at the state level is you have to declare a district before you can grant any abatement. It's kind of a catch-22, so in that sequence, I'm going to give you all the information you need upfront, so that should you establish the district, you'll know ahead of time whether you're going to go forward with the tax abatement itself. In this particular instance, you know, United Business Technologies has purchased a building at 315 Indusco Court. They're already at 353 Indusco Court, where they do some circuit boards and other electronic assembly and manufacturing. They've got new contracts, very exciting stuff for them, to do some high-tech manufacturing of electronics for the aerospace industry and defense contracts that they have. You'll note that the investment is about $1 million, and that's to get the building up to snuff to handle this type of manufacturing. As far as dollar-wise, that's not a lot compared to what you've seen in the past, but what is huge about this project is 150 new jobs. It's enormous for a facility of this size, even the two buildings together, and they've already got 120 people working there. So based on the fact that they own the building, there'll be $1 million in leasehold improvements to bring the building up to snuff, and the 150 employees that they're going to bring in, they qualify for a 10-year abatement. Dollar-wise, this one doesn't cost the city a whole lot of money. Over the 10 years, they're going to save roughly $44,000 on their overall tax bill. $21,900 of that is in, will be the actual savings, I'm sorry, their total tax bill will be about $44,000. They'll save half of that, so about $22,000 they'll save. Of that, the city's going to receive $7,300 roughly, that we don't get at all right now, and that building's been vacant for quite some time. So again, it's a 10-year abatement, it's roughly $7,300 to the city, the company's going to save $21,900. Process-wise, they meet all of the requirements. We have to establish a district if you feel that you're going to grant the abatement, which is the second public hearing that you'll have, whether or not to grant the abatement. That's all the information that I'll be presenting to you at this point in time. Michelle DeZuza is here. She's the owner of the company. It's a minority-owned company. It's a woman-owned company. They're certified both ways. She's doing some amazing things with the people that she's got working there, and we're just really excited to have 150 new jobs coming to Troy over this short amount of time. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Nino. Any questions for Nino this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, return it to the table for resolution. Councilwoman Hoderick?
I'll move E1 as printed.
Support. Who's that supported? Moved by Councilwoman Hoderick and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve E1 as printed in the agenda this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Pittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Motion passes. E2 is another public hearing for industrial facilities exempt certificate and IFEC for Unified Business Technologies, Inc. at 315 Indusco Court. I will open the public hearing. We don't need any further info from Nino, so is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, return it to the table for resolution. Councilman Pennington?
I will move E2 as printed.
Move by Councilman Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve E2 as printed in the agenda. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Pittner?
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations and thank you for your investment in the city. E3 is another public hearing for reprogramming, community development block grant, CDBG, for program year 2014 funds, with an introduction by Cindy Stewart and Kurt Bovensee, Public Works Manager. Good evening.
Good evening. Our 2014 money, we have to spend it or we give it back, and HUD changed the eligibility for what we can use our CDBG funds, so we were going to use them over at Milverton Park for a play area for two- to five-year-olds, but since we cannot anymore, staff met with Oakland County, and they are very happy that we could take care of some ADA compliant issues over at the village, the historic village. So we're going to take care of the Niles Barnard House and the township hall, take care of ramps, and we'll do walkways?
The automatic doors on the front door of the museum.
So we want to move that $107,000 from Parks and Recreation to the, what do you call it? Architectural barriers.
Got it. Any questions for Cindy Stewart or Kurt? Kurt, did you want to say anything further?
This is, this is very similar to what you, what we passed in December with the 2013 funds, so bringing the, removing some of the architectural barriers at the museums. This is a really good thing.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing and ask, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for resolution. Mayor Protem Campbell?
I'll move E3 ahead as written on the agenda.
Move by Mayor Protem Campbell and supported by Councilman Gottlieb that we approve E3 as printed in the agenda. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Pittner?
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
E4 is a public hearing for community block grant, CDBG 2015 application. Welcome back.
Oakland County has told us we have $152,857,000 to work with. We are going to do a project for Parks and Recreation for Redwood Park, and we are going to take 30 percent, the max we can use, out of our money for public services, which is yard services, and that's our home chore program. That's where we assist with low-income seniors and persons with disabilities. We take care of the yards in the summer and the snow in the winter.
And the parks development is going to be very similar to Milverton, where we've changed some of the demographics, or excuse me, the demographics have changed down there to more of a passive recreation. So we're going to provide that passive recreation opportunity by taking an existing basketball court and making into two pickleball courts and a approximately 1,200-foot, 10-foot-wide walking trail around the park.
Great. Thank you. Any questions in council? I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for resolution. Councilman Gottlieb?
I move that council move forward with E4 as printed.
By Councilman Gottlieb and supported by Councilman Henderson that we approve E4 as printed in the agenda this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Pittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Motion passes. E5 is another public hearing, the five-year Parks and Recreation Plan with an introduction by Brent Savadon, Planning Director. Good evening, Brent.
Good evening, Mayor Slater, city council members. As you indicated, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing. The city council is considering adoption of the five-year Parks and Recreation Plan. A Parks and Recreation Plan is a policy document that identifies a community's recreational goals. The criteria for a Parks and Recreation Plan is established by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, and it plans valid for five years. After such time, after five years, it's invalid. I refer to the PowerPoint on the screen. There are many reasons why a community considers adopting a five-year Parks and Recreation Plan. The process, the process provides an opportunity to inventory recreational facilities as well as recreational programs. On the screen now is a facilities inventory map. It shows parks and facilities in the city. It's pretty impressive and extensive system that we have here in the city. The reason I, I put that up there is to show that, also to clarify something, during the notification period for the public hearing, it was pointed out to me that there was a slight error in the plan. I just wanted to raise it publicly so everyone was on the same page. It actually showed, can you see that dot? It actually showed the entire Civic Center property as being blue. It kind of inferred that the whole property was a, was a park, and that included, that included the courthouse, police department, the park and ride, the library, and I just wanted to clarify that, that this was, this was amended to reflect that it's actually Huber Park and the Tennis Bubble, the Aquatic Center, and the Community Center that are, that are considered recreational facilities. The planning process serves as a platform for discussion with stakeholders to talk about recreational facilities and programs. It allows engagement with citizens, get their input, and with all this information, allows us to prioritize our list of facilities that we want to see. But most importantly, some would say, is it allows us to be grant-eligible for Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant funding. The most significant grant that's out there is the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. It's a bit of a mouthful, MNRTF, and that's probably the biggest pot of money that's available for development projects. It's an 80/20 match. The state match provides 8 percent, up to 80 percent. The city can provide up to 20 percent. And for development projects, you can seek up to $300,000 per project. That's a lot, that's a lot of money. If you don't have a Parks and Recreation Plan, you can't apply. And this is a really important key. This is a non-binding policy document. If we decide to go after state funding, we can. If we decide to go after, to pursue every item in here, no problem, but if we don't, there's no punishment. We're not, we're not obliged to do anything, so after five years, the plan will expire as per state requirements. There was a significant amount of community input that went into this, into this document. I'll just list off some really quickly. We use a program called My Community Remarks. That's an online tool for allowing citizens to comment via the internet. We administered a Parks and Recreation survey through Survey Monkey. We had almost 900 people respond, which is, which is a great response rate. We held a public input session, numerous Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meetings, as well as this public hearing. So we've really tried to make every attempt to allow people input into this, into this This is kind of the, the action plan is kind of the meat and potatoes of the, of the document. It's basically a list of specific projects that address the recreational goals that are identified in the plan. In most communities, it's a really lengthy list, kind of a laundry list. Sometimes it's up to 20 or 30 projects. It's very confusing. Our plan is very focused and very zeroed in. We only have four items, the four items, four items only, and I'll just go through those briefly. One item is a trail and pathway system. It incorporates the trails and pathway plan that was developed in 2009, but it was never formally adopted by city council. And that plan serves as a basis for the trailway project that was presented to council a number of weeks ago, basically involving a system that links the Civic Center property through, through rights of way and various other properties all the way up to Clinton River Trail. The survey I indicated earlier, it was that there was a 52 percent response rate that, or excuse me, 52 percent of respondents rated pathways and trails is very important. I mean, just kind of overwhelming numbers. Also of note, number eight of the list of city council's top 11 strategies, number eight is update and identify funding for the pathways and trails plan. This is, this is consistent with the strategies that city council put together. Next is a dog, developing a dog park. The city held a public forum for the dog park last Monday on the 19th of January. There was about 50 attendees. We've got a conceptual site plan that was put together. At that, at that open house, attendees talked about funding opportunities and just basically talked about various ideas related to the dog parks. It does have some momentum, and it's, a lot of people are pretty excited about this project. 48 percent of respondents listed dog park as their first, second, or third choice for new facilities, so again, pretty, pretty highly sought-after facility. The third item addresses the limited amount of revenue that is available for recreation facilities in 2015. This, this promotes working with community partners through alternative funding opportunities such as public-private partnerships, volunteerism, sponsorships, and pursuing grant applications. And finally, the last of the four items involves determining if the current programming provided by the city of Troy meets the recreational needs of citizens and adjusting programming as needed to, to address need. And with that being said, Mr. Mayor, I would note that Kurt Bovensee, who is the Public Works Manager, is here this evening, as is Elaine Bowe, the Recreation Director, and if there's any questions that I can't handle, they're here to help me. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions for Brent or staff this evening from council? I think it was pretty self-explanatory, so good job, thank you.
Thank you.
I will open this public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, return it to council for resolution. This one probably should be read into, into the record if somebody's ready. Councilwoman Hoderick?
Mayor, I will move E5, the suggested resolution language. Whereas the Planning Department, Recreation Department, and Department of Public Works jointly developed the city of Troy five-year Parks and Recreation Plan, and whereas, the plan identifies recreational need in the city and includes an action plan for recreation improvements over the next five years, and whereas, the plan is a policy document and is non-binding and does not fiscally obligate the city of Troy in any way, and whereas, public input was achieved using a wide range of methods, including an online Parks and Recreation Survey, Michigan Community Remarks online tool, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board public meetings, a public input session, and public notification of opportunities for public input published in local newspapers. Whereas, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee recommended approval of the plan at their February 21st, 2013 meeting, now therefore be it resolved that the city council concurs in the recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and approves the city of Troy five-year Parks and Recreation Plan. Be it further resolved that the city council authorizes the transmittal of the five-year Parks and Recreation Plan to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for approval.
Move by Councilwoman Hoderick and supported by Mayor Protem Campbell that we approve E5 as printed and read in this evening. Discussion.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
I just want to thank everyone that was involved in this process. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the members of the public that took time to give input. If you look at the council packet online and you, and you review this, you'll see people thoughtfully commenting about the priorities they see in the community, and that, to me, is a sign of people being very engaged, and I appreciate the effort that it took to reach out to people and to factor that input in. I also appreciate the connection to the overall vision that the council has set, actually the council that preceded me, but connecting, having a visionary document where we can make decisions and try to move forward in logical, fiscally responsible ways is something that makes this job easier. So it's, it's, the value is in the leadership that everybody is bringing to the process, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by council? Appreciate your hard work. The vote, Ms. Pittner?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you again for all your hard work. Next on the agenda is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And our first speaker is Lee Nardi, Troy resident, to speak on O5. Good evening.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is new experience for me, so I have to ask you to walk me through procedures.
You have three minutes, if you could. I know you were here last meeting to... I know you were here last meeting to give a, if we could just hold the clock for just a second. Maybe start it over at three when I'm done, if I could. You'll be given three minutes if you want to speak on the letter that's in the packet this evening on O.5. I would assume you've read that. And if you want to make any comments further, you have three minutes this evening.
I wish I would have received this report in the mail, because it brings up a couple other issues, and I could have, you know, had things together and addressed it better.
You're more than willing, you can come back at the next council meeting if you'll feel better to come back prepared at that time. Would you rather do that?
I just came back this time from the last council meeting, so, you know, I don't know if you want to give me more than three minutes or not.
Well, we gave you quite a bit of time last time. Let's start, do the three minutes, and see where you're at.
Starting with my comments first or answering this first?
Whatever you choose.
I'd like councilmembers, if you have copies of these pictures that were provided, to the second from the last page, picture looking east. If you look at the left side of the sidewalks and the left side of that railroad tie, if you look closely, you can see a small state sticking up. That would be the new proposed lot line if I would have sold the seven feet right of way to the city, which I did not. But you can kind of sight straight across, and that would have put the lot line about three feet from my front porch. I can spare these seven feet, so I didn't sell it to them. Looking at the right side of the sidewalk, you can see there's a path, dirt path got through there. Was on my property. I had to put up that barricade, the railroad tie laying there. The right end of that railroad tie is on my existing lot line. People just continue to walk over that now, but at least I get protected in my lawn and got, you know, the damage out on the easement. I've had trucks drive down the sidewalk, and I'm talking about the 12-foot utility bodies towing a tandem axle trailer, come right off the sidewalk, across my lawn, and out the driveway before I put up the barricade. That's why I had to protect my property somehow. Is also, well, when I mow, the mower throws up a big cloud of dust and debris from the bare dirt path on both sides of the driveway here. On this, just another shot looking east on the very back page, just another shot from a different angle. Then the other side is looking west.
Mr. Nardi, we were provided all those photos before the, pardon? We've seen those photos. We were provided with those photos this evening.
Well, yeah, but I'm trying to explain what they are.
Okay.
Just showing, you can see where the sidewalk would continue on the east side of my property. Now, this brings up a couple of new points. It says that I, throughout the enforcement and abatement process, I did not advise council code enforcement, my belief. Well, the first time I spoke to Mr. Ballard about it, I was pretty hot. I told him I've already been through this with Mr. Steimeck when he was here. I'm not going to keep going through all this, et cetera, et cetera. So I didn't tell him exactly why, but, you know, like I say, I've been through it before. And they failed to provide means for me to redress my agreements as provided in the First Amendment of our Constitution. At any point in time, they could have stopped this and told me how to proceed without going through all this stuff we're going through now. And another item, they spoke to the contractor that did the mowing, and I'm telling you, straight looking you in the eye, he is a liar on two counts. He says he did not take $10 from me. He did. And he claimed in here that he did not mow, because it was already mowed. He did mow.
Mr. Nardi, how much more time do you think you need this evening?
I couldn't tell you.
Well, your time is up. I'll give you, if you need it, I'll make, move a resolution to extend, to waive the rules for you to speak for two more minutes.
It'll help.
Do I have support?
Support.
Okay. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Pennington that we allow Mr. Nardi to speak for two more minutes. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good, Mr. Nardi, two more minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask me. The city has done two things to make it impractical for me to mow the easement. Since I had to place a barricade to discourage trespassing, there is now a three-to-four-foot wide bare dirt path on the easement instead of being on my property. Mowing causes a huge cloud of dust, which gets all over me in the mower, which is what I showed you in the picture. Also, when the city installed a large storm sewer and new water main, they eliminated the shallow ditch and three trees I had. Now that there is no barrier, drivers often turn around on the easement, leaving small ruts when the ground is soft. This happens on my easement as well as Peters' property to my east. Also, there are exposed tree roots in front of my house. I'm not willing to get covered with dust, risk damage to my mower because of the city causing these problems in the first place. This is all brought on to me by the city. And as I stated, the city totally abrogated my rights as a property owner by knowingly and willfully dumping sidewalk traffic, including trucks, onto my property, causing damage. The city also violated my First Amendment right to, quote, "petition the government for a redress of agreements," unquote, by failing to provide a means or opportunity to do so. The city is attempting to bind me to a third-party contract, or possibly an adhesion contract, that I had no knowledge of and did not consent to. The city is the one that wants the easement mowed. The city decides whether its city employees do the work or to hire a contractor. Since the city chose to contract the work out, any agreement is between the city and the person company hired. Now, this, as I stated, the contractor did mow it. He says he didn't. He got his 25 bucks versus three bucks.
Thank you, Mr. Nardi. This evening, we're going to hear a response from the city on this item.
Pardon me?
We're going to hear a response from the city shortly. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up this evening to speak on items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Next is city council or city administration response, reply to public comment. Mr. Kishnik, I will give you the opportunity to...
I'm just trying to think whether to start with Kurt or whether to start with Paul, because we've kind of had two issues going there. O.5 addresses the bill, so because we're talking about O.5, let's start with Paul Evans tonight, and then Kurt can come and tell us what the solution's going to be structurally. How's that?
Sounds good. Good evening, Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Paul Evans, zoning compliance specialist.
Did you bring that microphone to you, Paul?
Sure.
Thank you.
How's that?
Great.
And I oversee the code enforcement function for the city. I prepared a memo for your packet tonight that addresses Mr. Nardi's comments, specifically the ones that he made on the 12th to you. And I'd like to just briefly go over those if I could. Now, the city code, property maintenance, requires that tall grass and weeds not exceed a height of eight inches tall. Now, that requirement applies to private property and also the right-of-way adjacent to private property, so that'd be all the way to the edge of the road. Now, the property maintenance code goes on to say that after proper notification to the property owners, the city has the ability to enter onto the property, obey the violation, cut the grass, and charge the property owner all costs associated with that. Now, in August 2014, the city received a complaint about tall grass in the right-of-way at that location. Code enforcement went to the site, confirmed that tall grass did exist in the right-of-way, issued the violation notice, performed a reinspection, and confirmed that the grass had not been cut. We dispatched our mowing contractor out to the site, and after the, after a period of time, we re-inspected the property and confirmed that the grass had indeed been cut. Code enforcement created an invoice, sent some information order to finance. Mr. Nardi was invoiced, charges including contractor charges for a show-up fee, code enforcement labor, vehicle charges, and the Finance Department charged for administrative fee to create the invoice. Those are the charges that were incurred to abate the violation, everything the city had to pay for. Now, Mr. Nardi indicated to council on January 12th a couple concerns with this. First of all, he indicated that there are topographical problems with the property affecting the ability to mow, specifically damage from vehicles turning around and tree roots. Now, throughout the enforcement process, Mr. Nardi had not advised the code enforcement staff of these beliefs. So that was the first we heard about it on January 12th. However, we did, as you know, perform re-inspections. We actually inspected the property on it one or two occasions after that, just to monitor, to verify that grass wasn't regrowing. And we did not notice anything inordinate. The property appeared to be relatively flat, vegetated, didn't appear to pose a mowing problem. Now, the other thing Mr. Nardi advised council of on the 12th was that he paid our contractor, when the contractor arrived to mow, $10 to report to the city that it was already completed when the contractor arrived. Well, the billing from the contractor confirmed that it indeed was mowed when he arrived. But he, Mr. Nardi told us about, me about this in November of last year. And so we immediately got into contact with our contractor to find out just exactly what happened. The contractor confirmed that, yes, the property had been mowed when he arrived, and he did not take any money. Now, two days after Mr. Nardi made comments to you at your last meeting about that occurrence, I also, again, contacted our contractor to verify there had been a mistake, an oversight. Is this all correct? Just what's going on? We now have someone at council bringing these accusations. He again confirmed that the property was mowed, and no one took any money. We can't identify any procedural or fiscal mistake by the city or the contractor. It doesn't appear the site has any topographical conditions that could make perhaps mowing unsafe or unusually difficult. These invoiced fees that Mr. Nardi received would be the same fees that anyone else in the city, with a situation where the contractor is dispatched and shows up and there's nothing to cut, those are the same fees anyone else would pay as well. So I'm just having difficulty seeing cause based on that information, that anything inordinate occurred here. Kurt can talk a little bit about a long-term solution acceptable to Mr. Nardi that would include improvements to Waddles Road that can have an impact on his property.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for Paul at this time from staff? Councilman Henderson?
You're familiar with the photographs that we see in the packet, right?
Right.
The one that looks east, I guess I'm having a problem trying to figure out what, is it his responsibility? I see there's a telephone pole in the middle of the higher weeds. Is that his right-of-way that he needs to take care of?
Right. That's between his house and the street.
So beyond where the sidewalk end sign is his property?
Right.
And the right-of-way that needs to be?
Right.
And that's the area that you didn't see any real obstacles? Other than the, it looks like a dirt path. I can imagine running a lawnmower over that and the cloud of dust. I get that.
Yeah.
But other than that, there's no, it's relatively flat, so somebody could mow that?
Yeah. And we've had, we've had, this has come up before, where that inspector or someone calls us who's received the letter and said, hey, this is a tough area to cut. There has been damage. We work with the engineering department. If it's caused, say, by utility trucks in our right-of-way, to restore that. As a matter of fact, we even have a policy for sloped areas, that if it's a sloped area, we won't even require someone to mow that. So inordinate conditions have come up on properties before, and our inspectors are aware to keep an eye out for those.
Short of that sidewalk end sign, is that not Mr. Nardi's property?
Are you referring, oh, you're referring to the picture with the sidewalk ends, this one?
If you were standing behind the camera, just to the right there, is that your, that's not Mr. Nardi's property, correct? Because that looks pretty manicured.
Oh, yeah. Before, that's not his property. That's correct. Yeah.
So conceivably, that all could look like the property to the right?
Yes. And that would have been what it looked like after it was mowed.
Any other questions for Mr. Evans? Just a couple from, Mr. Nardi never came to you or anyone at staff after getting notice of the complaint and notice to cut the weeds. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Who supplied the photos? Was that Mr. Nardi or?
Yes. Those came with the letter that was in your packet.
With the letter?
Mr. Nardi. Yeah.
We don't know the date as to when those pictures were taken?
I don't know the date, no.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening. I was asked to go out to Mr. Nardi's house to address some of the concerns of the sidewalk. Knowing that property, because we did actually try to buy some of that right-of-way to fill that gap in, and it is the only house on Waddles that has the gap in that area. So I did take the opportunity to go out there to discuss with Mr. Nardi. And I made clear to him that I was there to solve the problem going forward, that I didn't have any part going in the past. After discussing with Mr. Nardi, I agreed that the sidewalk could bend around the tree, because the tree does have value. His tree does have value next to his porch. And agreed that this work could be done when we are proposing to resurface Waddles Road, including putting in a curb to protect trucks from going onto the property and addressing the storm drain issue as well. So going forward, we're going to include those in our proposed plan for Waddles to address these concerns.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any questions for Kurt? Thank you. Paul, I have one more question, if I could, regarding the contractor?
Yes.
How long have we used them? And do they provide this service to more than just this lot?
Yes. This was, this is the second of a three-year contract, and we probably, over that period, performed hundreds, couple hundred mowings on private properties. It could range anywhere from a small area of a property that's uncut all the way to acreage.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kishnik, I have a question. I would assume that staff does not recommend waiving these fees. Would that be correct?
That is correct.
Councilman Teetz?
Mr. Nardi asked about, you know, process of appeal and so forth, and it seems, I don't understand the, I can understand why he's concerned about that, but frankly, through this entire process, he's had many opportunities to appeal, including coming forward to the city council and going through all these facts and so forth. So I respect where you're coming from, but in the same way, we have to look at the facts as they are and kind of take a look at things. So, yeah, I'll be voting yes. I'll see it.
I'm not sure what you'd be voting yes for.
Well, it's a report, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, then, I'm giving an A-plus to the report.
Oh, okay.
Just a thumbs up. My apologies.
Yeah. I think when complaints come before council, that staff did something wrong or did not investigate something, I think there has to be a basis for us to overrule staff suggestions. And I've looked at all of this, and I see no reason to override a decision that's made by Mr. Kishnik and his staff personally. I don't know how the rest of council feels, whether they wish to speak on this item at this time. But I believe due process has been served, and I support the decision made by Mr. Kishnik and his staff. Anyone else wish to speak on this issue? Mr. Nardi, this is not a format that we get to go back and forth. Our rules do not abide for that, and they prohibit that. We'll be more than happy to talk to you after council this evening if you want to. I'd be happy to do that, if you wish to proceed further.
I was going to say that there should be a direct conversation.
Unfortunately, Mr. Nardi, I know. Unfortunately, the rules do not allow for that to happen. So we're going to move on with regular business. So, we're going to move on with regular business, and Mr. Nardi will be happy to talk to you further about this after the meeting. First, on the agenda for regular business is I-1, which is board and committee appointments. I have three appointments this evening. I will move that we appoint Frank Stroll to the board of review for the term that expires 1/31/2018. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we appoint Frank Stroll to the board of review for the term that expires 1/31/2018. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations to Mr. Stroll. Next, I would move to appoint Padma Kupa and Ali Apahedian to the planning commission for the terms that expire 12/31/2017. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we appoint Padma Kupa and Ali Apahedian to the planning commission for the term to expire 12/31/2017. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations to Ali and Padma. I know Ali is here this evening. Congratulations to you, Ali. I'm sure planning commission looks forward to having you as a member. I will turn the microphone over to Mayor Pro Tem Campbell for city council appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first one will be the appointments for the election commission, and I'd like to move forward David C. Anderson and Harry Filo, both of which their terms will expire January 31st, 2016.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we appoint to the election commission David C. Anderson and Harry Filo for the terms to expire 1/31/2016. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations to Mr. Henderson and Mr. Filo. Next is I-2, board and committee nominations. One nomination this evening. I will move to nominate for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Mary Kirwin for the term that expires 4/30/2017. Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we nominate Mary Kirwin for the term that expires 4/30/2017. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. I will again turn the microphone over to Mayor Pro Tem Campbell for city council nominations.
Okay, our next one will be for the liquor advisory committee, and we have, it's like three people we're going to, I'd like to put forward tonight. We'll, Max Ellert, I would like to have him reappointed through 1/31/2018. Also, Timothy Payne, he will also be reappointed through the same date, January 31st, 2018. And I'd like to add Ann Kaminsky for the position that David Easterbrook had, and that will also expire 1/31/2018. The student position, we'll still hold open, because we don't have any students right now to put forth on that.
Okay, did you want to continue?
Sure. We only have about 300 more on here.
We have time.
You got time, no problem. Parks and Recreation Board, I would like to put, we have a vacancy with Carolyn Noble's unexpired term for that position. I would like to put the name of Judy Baker on that, and her, she would expire, that would expire 9/30/2016. And the last committee would be the traffic committee. Traffic committee, I would like to reappoint Tim Bradsetter, and that will expire 1/31/2018. And for the open position, I'd like to put Cynthia Wiltshire, and that also will expire And last, but certainly not least, would be the zoning board of appeals. For this group, I would like to nominate Thomas Desmonte for the position that Bruce Bloomingdale has resigned from, and he would, his position will expire 4/30/2015. Phil Zenzica would replace Tom Crent, and he would expire his position 12/31/2015. And I would like to reappoint Rusty Calstoros, and he would expire 1/31/2018. Likewise, Paul McCowen, for the last position to be reappointed. Also, that position would expire 1/31/2018. And that is it.
We have support?
Yeah, could I read them all back?
No. Supported by? As read. Okay. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell and supported by Councilman Gottlieb, that we appoint, or we nominate all persons identified by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell for open positions this evening. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jim. I know that's a, that's a tough, tough job to try and get people on there, and we need to recruit, is what we need to do. There is no closed session request this evening, so we will move to I-4, which is an agreement with Extonet Systems, Inc., for the use of city of Troy-owned facilities to provide communication services. I see Kurt Bovin-Seepe is ready to speak on this item. Good evening again.
There you go. Good evening, thank you. Extonet Systems, before use a contract to lease city-owned facility, specifically streetlight poles. Extonet brings a solution to the city of Troy. We've seen some resistance to traditional cell towers, proposed cell towers here in the city of Troy. Extonet provides mini cellular antennas. They're asking to place them on top of three streetlight poles around Somerset Mall. This would provide our constituents with better cellular signal, and would also provide us with some revenue for the use of the facility. Linda Rooney with Extonet Systems is here in the audience, if there's any questions specifically for Extonet. We did talk with John Mizek, the general manager of Somerset Mall, just to make sure that he knows what's going around with his facility. He welcomed the idea, and he was very appreciative that the city came to him and notified him what was going on. So with that, just one more item, the revenue. The revenue would generate an initial amount of $17,400, that's for a 10-year lease. There are two options to renew at five years each within the lease agreement. Our intent with these $17,400 is to reinvest that money into LED lighting in that area. Again, this way, we see an immediate return on the investment with LED lighting. Extonet originally requested that it was a monthly payment, but this way, we get immediate return on investment. Any questions for me or Linda in the audience? Be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Kurt? Councilman Henderson?
I appreciate the photographs with the mockups of the units on the poles. Outside of that, the specific pole that one of those is installed on, how far does that, I mean, do these just reach that general area, or do those three service the entire city of Troy? And who benefits which phone companies?
Sure. If I could call Linda up to answer those, she might have some better answers than me. I know Extonet is a third-party company. They provide cellular, these antennas for all cellular services. I'm not sure who the cellular service would be for this one, but it could be, could be for any of them.
Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. Yes, Extonet System, their business plan is to provide access for all the carriers. This particular, with these three nodes, is just for Verizon Wireless. But it will provide enhanced coverage just inside the Somerset Mall, so it's limited just to that area as the economic develops.
Okay. Just a follow-up to that, then, if you were to expand that, or do you have any plans, first off, to expand that into a larger area? And if so, you know, does one of these units cover a mile, or?
It's, it depends. This, this area, it's limited just to the Somerset Mall area, and we would, of course, if there was any need for additional capacity, would come back to the city and request approval, and go through the process again, securing those approvals.
So you're addressing a specific issue with mall phone coverage?
Yes. There's a need for coverage in that area, specifically the mall, for data and phone capacity issues.
I have a question. So if AT&amp;T or some other carrier hears that Verizon is doing this, and I guess it's your intent to, hopefully AT&amp;T and the other carriers will want to do that, this is, this will only work for one carrier, that's my understanding, right? You would have to get other poles for other carriers, correct?
Yes. And we have to address that in the city as well.
Mayor, if I may, the lease agreement does have some provisions in there to add, because this is not exclusive, we, the city of Troy owns 539 light poles within the city, so it's not exclusive to Extonet or any company that. But we would welcome the opportunity, under reason, that Extonet would come forward with more opportunity. Again, there's a, there's a direct benefit to the city from the revenue standpoint, and a direct benefit to our constituents meeting the demand for cellular signal.
Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Where else do you have these units in the area?
There are facilities in Franklin Village and, you know, many surrounding communities. We, Las Vegas, there, the strip of Las Vegas, San Francisco Bay area. It's a good solution for providing coverage and enhanced services in areas where a typical tower or just will not work, or is not aesthetically pleasing.
Councilman Gottlieb?
I noticed on your website, you list Bloomfield Hills. Has there been any feedback, and do you still have them there from that community? Any?
As far as I'm aware, I-
Feedback from Bloomfield Hills, or no?
Not that I'm aware of.
Councilman Henderson?
The unit that sits on the ground is, seem to be maybe three or four feet high, you know, that could be an illusion based on the Photoshop process, but can those be surrounded with bushes, shrubs, so they can?
We can do that, to make it.
If I may, John Mizek from Somerset also commented on that, and as we're going through the photo simulations, which I take no credit for that, Extonet did that all, they did a fantastic job. John made the same, same comment, he said, "Well, Kurt, can we put some bushes around it?" And I said, "Well, absolutely, John, we can do that." That would almost be different than what's out there now, though. If you look at some of those photo simulations, they're just standalone boxes, where the landscape may make it a little bit more intrusive, because it would look different. But I, talking with Extonet and talking with John, once we get the boxes in, I think we can work that out.
Is this a new solution to cities denying towers? Is this the wave of the future, I would assume, to some degree?
It's helpful. It offers alternative solutions. It may not be the end-all, be-all for certain circumstances, but it certainly does provide the enhanced coverage without, it won't replace probably ever, but that's my personal opinion. But-
Yeah. The more difficult areas that-
Get your solution for that.
Any other questions? Councilman Teetz?
Just for the sake of clarification, the boxes that we're discussing are five to six feet tall, not, not three feet tall, so.
I didn't see the spec.
I would, I'm not a landscape architect, but certainly seems like it'd be something to see, so. And, may I ask, so would the city pay for that landscaping, or is that Extonet? I mean, while we're, while we're talking here?
That responsibility would be on Extonet, yep. The landscaping, the cost of landscaping, Extonet-
So has that been discussed, what that is? I mean, your opinion of landscaping appropriateness and theirs might be different. I just, has that been discussed?
No, it hasn't. Again, the idea was to make it look similar to what's out there on Big Beaver. We currently have those five-foot boxes, often for irrigation for the streetlight traffic signals and streetlight load centers, so it's very similar to what's out there. Again, we took into consideration Somerset's opinion, and if there's an issue with landscaping, we certainly can go back with Extonet and amend the agreement to include the landscaping in there, but from our discussions with, with the public, there wouldn't be an issue with landscaping. Not to have it.
The public, you're saying that the public would not mind if there was that box, is that what you're, I don't-
Because there would be a consistency that there would be no landscaping around it.
But Somerset asked for that, and, or the-
Somerset inquired about it.
Inquired about it. Had the same concerns about the box that, okay. I just, it seems, it seems like we should get this settled out before we sign on board, because our definition of what landscape would be in theirs might, might vary, and I just hate for that to be an issue later on.
I think that's a good point, but I think we kind of hold some aces in our hand, because if they want to come back to us, and I would think they may want to come back to us to use some more of our poles, if they don't put the landscaping in like we want, I think we might have trouble allowing them future use also. But I don't disagree that we shouldn't maybe address that in contract. City Attorney Bloom?
Mayor, one option that you do have, if you want to insist upon, you could modify your resolution and just include that there would be appropriate landscaping to shield the boxes, and you could put that in your resolution.
Approved by Mr. Kishnik or his designee?
All right, good compromise. Move him.
Is that okay with Extonet?
I would just say that sometimes landscaping can be more obtrusive than, than, the benefit might outweigh the risk, so.
That's why we're leaving it up to city staff to work with you.
And I agree with that. I think we can come up with something suitable.
Perfect.
Thank you. Councilman Teetz, are you moving the-
Yes, to amend the resolution to read what was just mentioned by the city attorney.
Like, I can take a stab at it, then it would be resolved that the agreement between the city of Troy and Extonet Systems, Inc., for the use of city of Troy-owned facilities to provide communication services is not exclusive and therefore satisfies Section 12.1 of the Troy City Charter. Accordingly, the attached agreement between the city of Troy and Extonet Systems is hereby approved with the condition that the, that city administration approve landscaping for the boxes, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the document on behalf of the city, and copy of the agreement shall be attached to the minutes of the meeting.
Would you say approve landscaping- Would you say approve landscaping if necessary?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Watch me. That's what I'd like it to read.
Are you supporting that?
I support that.
So moved by Councilman Teetz with the language provided by the city attorney and Mr. Kishnik and supported by Councilman Henderson. Further discussion? Do we vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Are we voting on...
There wasn't a motion, there wasn't a motion on the original, so we just amended the resolution to reflect the language.
Thank you, Linda. I'm sure they'll work it out. Next is the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone on council wishes to remove this Mayor Protem Campbell?
I'd like to move the motion forward for the resolution to accept all of the items that are listed on the consent agenda.
Support.
By Mayor Protem Campbell and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next are council, or memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none submitted this evening. No one has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents or businesses. There are no council referrals. Next is council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilman Henderson?
Just wanted to thank the city manager and city staff on the pickleball courts. Good move. Thank you. A lot of people are going to be happy.
For the older folks, like, understand.
I noticed that wasn't in the five-year plan for the Parks and Rec, and I understand that it's not in the five-year plan because there wasn't a big demand in the research.
Still, they found a way.
But they found a way. Any other council comments? Next is reports. Anyone on council wish to comment on any of the reports this evening? No one has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There's no closed session, so we are adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.